Good, we're recording. Thanks for coming. I'll just be loud and stand for a second. So first off, thank you so much for braving the weather. Everyone here is, it's awesome to have you here. More folks than we had last time, so that's great. Preliminary, I just want to say, looking at the radar, we know there's a big blob coming in, so should the alarms go off, we will go into the hallway through here between the front office and where the other room is. So we've got some shelter, just in case, so just want to say it up front. Also, I recognize that we've got some major holidays this week, so I appreciate you being here and appreciate everybody who will be tuning in later on, so thanks for coming. Here, here you go.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Timely.
Here.
Magnus.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
We have a forum? Do I need a microphone?
Yes.
For those of you who may not have joined this in the past, Mike Richley is the architect who's been working on, with us on our overall facilities and these plans. And he's going to go over some updated numbers and the remaining plans that are still up there, so that we have a little more context and the board will present any questions. And then afterward, we'll have public comments from anybody who wishes to come up and speak.
Thank you, TJ. My name is Mike Richley with Richly Architects, and I'll work through the current plan options with you briefly. I know the intent is for the board to hear from the community tonight, so if there's any specific detail or follow-up or any kind of technical questions you have on any of the detail behind any of these, feel free to ask, and I'll address those as best as I can. There is currently six options being considered, and the board's intention is to make a decision on which plan they want to move forward with next month. And that plan would be before voters this coming fall. So I know this, they're very interested in hearing your feedback as they're reforming other decisions. There's two A plans, two B plans, and two C plans. The A plans are renovation plans to your existing campuses. So Mills Lawn would stay a K6, and the middle school, high school would stay a 712. In each of the plans, there would be improvements to the envelope, the roofing, the exterior, the windows, the walls, all new systems upgrades, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and interior finishes and furniture. The variation with the range you see between A1 and A2 is for essentially two reasons. One is the depth of the renovation in A2, where A2 goes a little bit deeper in moving interior walls, reconfiguring spaces. Also, A2 has more additions than A1, which is why you see the square footage on A2 at 133,000 and on A1 at 124. The A1 plan would replace the modular with the addition of a new music room. However, the A2 plan goes further and adds two music rooms and an art room here to this campus. So that's the difference in the square footage. Also, at the middle school and high school, the A2 addition would include two music rooms, where in the A1, there was just one new band room. Again, I have plans of all of these. If you want to see them, happy to go through those and explain that further. Essentially, those are the two A options. Yes?
Do you want to explain the modulars and the art rooms?
Yes, so a little bit more detail on the middle school, high school plan, as we would retain a portion of the original building, but we would remove the tower. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah, in the A's. We would remove the modular McKinney Middle School, the shoebox, and replace with a five classroom addition. And then also, we would come out front and do a new office addition, add a secure vestibule, and add a band room in A1. You can see the size in square footage for each of those. You can see the budgets. Again, you can kind of think of these as a range. Both A1 and A2 are ranges of that option of adding, demolishing, and renovating your current facilities where they sit today. Next two columns, you'll see future state credit and future local share. In this option, this would not be participating with the state, so how the construction program, because the building sizes are too small. They're under the 350 student threshold. So you'll see the future state credit is zero, because these would be fully locally funded, no state participation. And then on the right side, you would see the future local share as the same price as the original budget, because there would be no state credit coming back to offset its cost. Next up are the B options, B1 and B2. These are K12 options. In B1, it would be a brand-new K12 at the Enid Road site, and the abatement and the demolition of Mills Lawn School and the middle school and the high school. And you can see its size in square feet. The first cost, 58.1. And because this would be a partnership with the state, there would be a future state credit of approximately $11.8 million. And then the final local share after the credit is applied would be approximately $46.3 million. B2 is a variation on B1 that keeps a portion of your existing high school. We would keep the gymnasium, we'd keep the 2002 addition, we tear down the tower, the shoebox, the band room, and add an addition to that building. So that is the same square footage, but approximately $4 million less, because the addition size would be less, because we would be using approximately 36,000 square feet of your existing building and just renovating it. Approximate state share for that one is 11.1, and approximate future local share is 43.2. The C options are two campus options as well. And each of these options, Mills Lawn stays as a K4. That would be renovated. And then in C1, there would be a new 512 at Enid Road. And in C3, it would be a 512, that's an addition to the same portion of your existing high school I mentioned last time that we would keep. So we would keep the gymnasium and 2002 addition, but we would add a 512 addition onto that building, as opposed to a K12 addition onto that building. You can see the square footages here are higher, 155,000 per each one. The reason they're higher is because we're going to the middle school, high school site and adding an addition for two more grades than they have today, and we're keeping this full building size that we have today here at Mills Lawn. So in summary, you add the two square footages up, and it's higher than either the As or the Bs. You can see the budgets, and I'll explain why there's a range in the budget. If you remember the A1 options at Mills Lawn, there's a range between the renovation cost, how much you're investing in the renovation. Those options remain viable with Cs, because after you do your 512 building, you have some choices on the depth of the renovation at this existing school. So at the lower end of the range, 64.1, you would be completing the A1 level of work at Mills Lawn, less the band room, because we wouldn't need the band room addition anymore, because those two grade levels are moving out, we wouldn't need to add on. And it's, the upper range of that was 67.6, would be the A2 version of the Mills Lawn deeper renovation. Then on C3, you can see the ranges again, the 60.8 to 64.3. Again, those ranges are, because you have some choice on how deep you go, how far you go on renovation at Mills Lawn for C3 as well. C2 and C4 options were eliminated by the board, I believe, last week or two weeks ago. Those were options to do a new K4 here. So this would be an abatement, demolition, and a new K4 building at this site. Those options were taken off the table from the board recently. So these are the six that we're down to. And again, you can see on the far right side, the B options and the C options are the options that can take advantage of a future state credit. So theoretically, five years down the road, when that funding would be available, it would come back to the school board, who could use that to offset your debt down the road. However, first costs for all the options show up under that budget range, so that's the amount that would be on the ballot in November. So that's a quick intro. I remain available all night for questions, clarifications, details, floor plans, anything you want to see to help support the process, so thank you.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful to show the public how we potentially could cut costs by cutting square footage in the program of requirements, so to indicate that these can be proposed. I mean, that would just really up to the board, but it might provide some context.
I was going to say, I think the pictures you have, the floor plans are very helpful to people, as said last time. They should be, we should have those, don't we?
Yeah. How about I address both of those?
But personally, I think going through a lot of the details is pretty complicated. I think for most people, we have no problem being careful and not giving them too much details there.
Well, I'll try to address both of those. We'll start with, yes?
Yeah, I was just going to encourage to follow up on that question that Terry made, because I think it is important for the public to know that there is some options within that square footage, and just breaking it down further. I understand that that's a little bit more complex, but it helps them understand, it helps all of you know how we arrive at these numbers, and that there is still potential for change.
Yes, there's a, you can see the word draft on the left right, and at the very bottom, I added a line that says, "District approval of final locally funded initiatives." So the basis in the B options and the C options, the question is, how much is the building going to cost? The answer, well, how big is the building, your building? So we did some work to come up to where we are today. That work was working with your leadership and your principals to identify, space by space, what they would like to see in both the K12 and the 512. And that work has been done, and the result of that work is embedded in these costs. However, the board has not spoken into this process yet, and they're going to have some opportunities to ask questions and verify what feels right to them. For example, if you can take off tens of thousands of square feet onto, like right now, we've got about 20,000 square feet over the state funded amount. If you can cut that in half, you could take four and a half million dollars out of any of the Bs and Cs. You know, but these are the decisions that would come down to, how many gymnasiums are we going to put in the K12, one or two, right? One other option, and I don't want to get us too far off track, is you can see some inefficiency in the square footage of Cs, up at 155,000 square feet. We can take a big bite of that inefficiency if we take sixth grade and we put sixth grade at the high school site. I'm sorry, take fifth grade and keep them here. So keep the high schools as 612 instead of 512. That means that addition could be smaller, more students could stay here, and more efficiently use this building. So there's nuancey options for any of these Bs or Cs that could wiggle this cost down by some number of millions of dollars. They'll be working with the board in the coming weeks to come to a final terms on. Next, floor plans. So this is your existing floor plan of Mills Lawn, and your existing floor plan of the middle school and high school. I would point out to you, when I was speaking of the tower, it's this portion, which is its first floor, the second floor, and the third floor. When I was speaking about the shoebox, it's McKinney Middle School here, and then the band room or the spaceship, I'm referring to that space. So in A1 at Mills Lawn, I mentioned the modular that's sitting in the back would be permanently removed, and we would replace it with new construction for a new band room. Do deeper renovations in the front of A1 to address your secure vestibule entry, your administrative spaces. We'd also do deeper renovations to your larger restrooms right here, make them AD compliant and function better. The balance of the building would be all systems, finishes, furniture. The A1 option at the middle school, high school keeps the tower and adds a new addition here in yellow, which is a new office, a secure vestibule addition, and a new large band room, and then replaces the modular with permanent construction of five new classrooms. We do deep renovation to your first floor restrooms, as well as some counseling and some office support spaces. Then we would add restrooms to the second floor of the tower. And then in A2, this one is the one that's the larger cost and more extensive scope. The addition would grow with two new music rooms and an art room. We would add an addition to the kitchen, a small addition here, which would improve circulation around the library. And then we would do deeper renovation and a more expansive portion of the plan to move walls, right-sized bathrooms, create some open extended learning areas, and some small group rooms as well. And the A2 variation of middle school, high school expands the addition out front by adding choir and theatrical rehearsal room. And then also has deeper renovation in all the floors of the tower, and also kitchen expansion into the adjacent classroom. I think that's it. Yes?
Just really quick, in both of the A1 and the A2 and the tower, are you still assuming we're moving the middle school there and having the high school in the main part?
So, yeah, during the planning phase, that was a discussion of flipping it, and there were some advantages that were conceived for that. For example, having the majority of the high school, you know, as your capstone, new construction on the first floor, and then having the middle school as a more self-contained unit in the tower. That decision is not final, but it's very likely that could happen in the As.
What's the current square footage of the current school?
So the middle school, high school is approximately 74,000.
74,229.
74,229.
Forty-seven and change.
And then Mills Lawn is approximately 47,000 square feet.
It used to be on your maps.
And I would say the closest number to the existing would be this, less about 1,600 square feet. Yes? That's close.
Around 121, 121,000.
It's got 120,000, 121,000 square feet today. Yes?
Is that amount of space, without looking at the details of what's in the space, but just that general amount of space considered to be enough? What we have now, is that amount of space?
Yes.
Or is space something that you really need more of?
I mean, my, you're asking, my professional opinion is, if you're currently sitting at 120,000, 121,000 square feet, any plan that rests in that 120, 121 feels about sufficient to support your educational needs.
The way the teachers and faculty and the staff would like, I mean, not ideal, but does it leave out something that they really, really need?
So you asked me an opinion question. My opinion is, is all of these plans address the critical needs, everything we've heard is critically important. For example, improvements in safety and security. All plans address secure vestibules, reconfiguring office space to make sure that happens. All the plans address infrastructure, mechanical, electrical plumbing upgrades, roofing. The differences that you get in a new building versus a renovation options are the ability to kind of plan from scratch, plan where classrooms go, you know, what their adjacencies are, how they're related to maybe more open space, versus if you're renovating, you're essentially, at the end of the day, you're kind of having the layout that you have today, pretty much. But yes, to answer your question, any of these plans has sufficient space to meet your educational needs. 121,553 square feet existing today. Yes?
What happened with A1, why is it $1 million more today than it was yesterday?
So all of these budgets and plan options are continually being refined. I've been working with multiple groups to kind of get to this number. This latest version, and maybe I should let Jay speak to it, was working with him as late as yesterday to reconcile the extent of the mechanical, electrical plumbing scopes in A1 versus A2. There are also, there were some other nuanced things. Do you want to, Joe?
So the change is just addressing the discrepancies that were discussed at the last board meeting. The discrepancies were there, and until those discrepancies can be resolved, it's better to include them than exclude them, because the plans say that they're addressing the full envelope and the full systems upgrade, so I included the full envelope and the full systems upgrade.
So I want to make sure we have enough time, get a lot of folks right up for comments, and that the main rule, the listing session in here, so I want to make sure that the board have any questions if we give up this time. Do you want to weigh down?
Yeah, I don't know if this works. Just make sure it's close. Sounds good. So I know that early in the process of last year, students and teachers had told us that they wanted to see more gender-neutral restrooms, so I'm assuming that we've accommodated that request and we included that in the restrooms, right? I know that we're not talking about specific plans, but I wanted to make sure that if it was an addition to gendered restroom, that we would accommodate that.
Yes, accommodations for gender control could be in any of the options.
Okay. And then the other question has to do with the POR, this document. I think that for me to be able to sort out the square footage of the new, of the various plans, it would be useful to be comparing it to the existing square footage. And I see that we have a middle column here that says existing SF. Is that something that we can fill in with our current plans?
So if I'm interpreting your question correctly, I think the most meaningful way to do that would be to go through your existing, and this is something I can do to help support the board's board session. Come up, let's say, typical average classroom size in each of the wings, how does that compare to eight and a tenth square feet? Determine that square footage of all your gymnasiums, your specials, how does that compare to the new, your media centers, your kitchens, some of those kind of one-off areas? I think that would be kind of the most meaningful comparison, as opposed to necessarily like space by space, because it won't exactly flush out.
Categories by categories. I think I want to see where, which plan would be most efficient in which ways, I guess. I'm trying to understand better how to compare square footage here and see what is our sweet spot. So anything that could help us with that would be useful.
Absolutely.
That's it for me.
Now, this is just something that we discussed at the last board meeting, is that I don't think it's annotated on any of the B or C options, is that there is a .5 mil for 23-year obligation for a catastrophic maintenance fund. And that's, at current mileage rates, that's about $2 million that the school is obligated to set aside. And so that's another consideration for the option Bs and Cs. It's not something that we have to finance right away, but it is something that we need before we get the, before we got any future credit.
That's correct. We're going to be talking about that next week, Amy, so we're April 13th next week, so we'll call it.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there's an additional number, basically, to add to the B and C, you know, columns, and it's an obligation of about another $2 million.
I would not categorize it like that. There is an obligation for a mileage requirement, but I will address that next week.
Maybe we could contextualize what is happening next week for the public, and then I think if there were other questions coming from the public directly to Mike, so that people could have this opportunity to clarify their understanding. I cede my time for folks who have a direct question for Mike before we get to the comments. It's been about half an hour, I think we could maybe spend 10 more minutes with questions from the public. But to let folks know, it'll be next week, April 13th, at our regular board meeting, in which Jay will be presenting on a much more detailed scale about the financing of these options and the financial plans. So rather than get into those weeds right now, maybe we'll just pause and say, stay tuned for the 13th on the financial plans that Jay will present.
And that'll be at the high school.
At the high school.
Other questions?
So I, do you have any graph like this that compares the environmental impact of the different plans?
What do you mean by environmental impact?
I just heard and read some stuff about the environmental impact of demolishing and building new buildings, and how much more sustainable on an environmental level renovating buildings are. So is there any comparison of the environmental impact of the different plans?
Not, no like graphs or CO2 carbon offset, we don't have any data like that, but if your, if your opinion is it's more environmentally sustainable to keep your existing buildings, that there are definitely some options on here that support that.
It's not my opinion, I'm actually looking for information about it. So I would like to know what the environmental impact in the village like living in this would be option. And I feel like that should be public.
And I'll just, I'll just say, in my experience, done lots of renovations of existing buildings, I've done lots of new buildings, and just trying to, think about it holistically, you know, long-term, because one of the upsides of new construction from an environmental standpoint is the ability to seal the envelope perfectly, insulate exterior walls perfectly. And so there's some.
Create so much waste in the process.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there's, there's other ways to consider that same opinion, which is the longer, cost, the long-term utility usage of new construction. So there's, it gets kind of a complicated discussion. I think there's, there's a lot to grab on to for both sides of that. Other questions? Yes?
That makes me wonder, I was thinking about the cost of demolition. I know that's pretty astronomical, but I have no idea what portion of each of these budgets would be demolition. That would be very curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is all printed, but if this was printed, you have it in your hands.
In the agenda, there are the attachments, and so if you go online, you'll be able to pull them down, and I think those costs are all in.
Yeah, you can, you can find the abatement and demolition line items per each of the options.
Is that like for, all broken down into one each, or is it one number for each plan?
Yeah, it's broken, the abatement and demolition of Mills Lawn is broken down separately. The abatement and demolition of the Middle School High School is broken out separately. So you can see each of the line items for that. Yes? Yes, sir? So we do not have plans of B1, but let me just kind of describe what it could be. And in that scenario, you would, you would build a new K-12 on the Eden Road site. I don't know exactly where that would be, but likely on the south side of the existing building where you have the space. You would construct the building, move the students in, and then you would go back and abate and demolish the existing building in B1. In B2, you would keep the tower intact while during construction, so the students could stay there and it wouldn't have to be displaced. You would put a large addition on the south side of it for, for the, and the students would move into that addition and you would come back and demolish the tower, reskin the front face. So both doable, and you have a lot of property to do so.
So they would have a storm shelter, a fancy unit to better parts?
So a storm shelter is a decision the board has not made, yet whether that's in or out. The governor did just sign a law in January, I believe, that makes that no longer a requirement. So it can be up to the local school district if they want to have that or not. So that's not necessarily a for-sure thing.
There was funding, I mean, for hardening that the state provides in some of these plans?
Yeah, that's, that's a special allowance for the state share if you want to do a fully compliant storm shelter. That's not funding. That can be used for just simply hardening. Yes?
I want to request that when folks ask questions, you repeat.
Okay. I can do that. Yes, sir?
For the A1, A2s at the high school, what is the plan for the cafeteria, maybe for that part, that gets renovated?
All right. Question was, and I'm going to repeat questions for those online, is in the A1, A2 plans, what happens to the middle school, high school cafeteria? And the plan here is, first of all, there is a, what's called a kiva, which was constructed in the corner. Our recommendation is to remove that, which would allow the size of that student dining room to increase. There's also a classroom that's right here, and our recommendation is to take that classroom offline and use that as serving area for the students. Because right now, the serving area is in the hallway, and so that would allow the kitchen to be reconfigured, have a nice serving area, and expanded student dining room into that space. So that's the A1 or A2 plans. You didn't ask this question, but in the Bs or Cs, it would be envisioned that there'd be a new kitchen and a new student dining room. Other questions? Yes?
I wanted to, I have two comments to address what Terry was asking about demolition and what happens to the building materials when a building is demolished. I've heard from someone who works in the sustainability field that a lot of that material is immediately recycled, especially into road construction. I don't know if you can comment on that?
Yes, so the question was, when buildings are demolished, can materials be recycled? And yes, that's in our specifications, is to recycle as much as possible of the building demolition. Yes?
My other, excuse me, my other question, which is not related, has to do with the district offices for which currently we are all paying fairly high monthly rent. And I'm wondering if any of these options could include district offices?
So the question was, what about district offices? Which options could include them? Theoretically, any of these options could include them. The one that could address it the most efficiently would be the Cs, because as I mentioned before, in the C options, you see the one hundred fifty-five thousand square feet. So if this building instead of a K6 is a K4, might there be some additional square footage available for another use like board office or something else? So I would say right now, the C option could address it the most efficiently. However, if the board decided to add square footage to any of these plans, a board office could be added to any of them.
Would there be any state funding for a board office?
There would not be any state funding for a board office, no. Anything else before we get to your questions? If anything else comes up, I am here.
All right. So like I said, the, the main goal for tonight was to hear as much feedback as we could from the community, where we're like six forty, so we've got over an hour, hour and a half minutes, and so just want to open it up. We're going to restrict comments to a three-minute. I've got a list of folks who have signed up, and then we can go from there. We don't want to distill it to a hundred percent. We'll keep you to your three-minute comments just because we want to have everybody have a chance to be able to, to speak.
And anybody that comes here should introduce themselves?
Yes, please. Yeah, so please state, state your name and, and come on up. So I'll start with the list that I have up front, and then we'll go from there.
I will shout thirty seconds at you when you have thirty seconds.
You have the time. Thank you, Jay. Oh, yeah, you can get the lights on now. We turned the lights down so we could see the, the slides a little better. We can turn it up so it's a little bit more. We see everybody. All right, so our first speaker is Dawn Don.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I have no doubt that our well-educated community supports the education of children. That said, the demographics of our community indicate that a large percentage of us are currently on fixed incomes or will be in the next few years. Our household is quite average in that regard, because we're approaching fixed income retirement age, and our income is very close to the median right now, but expected to drop when we reach that golden year. We are the well that the board will go to to find the money for the public school facilities. The taxpayers cannot offer more cash than we have. It's a hard reality, but I had hoped that the board was politically astute enough to understand this. We must build the schools with and for the community we have, not the one we wish we had. While a tiny handful of very wealthy people tip our average community income upwards, the vast majority of us work paycheck to paycheck and pray our cars don't break down or that we stay healthy enough to go to work. If you comment us with a big ask, which it looks like you are, that we cannot reasonably be met by the majority of us, don't be surprised if we don't support it. I believe we've lost two years when we could have been making some progress to work within our district taxpayers' needs. I hope you've done better.
Abby Calcal.
Public school education is the foundation of our democracy. Every single person in the United States is responsible for helping to pay for public school education. It is precious. No matter what decision we make here, no matter what community we were to live in, we would need to pay taxes to support public education. It is very important, and it is spread out over many generations or at least several generations, because every person in every generation should pay for public education. I personally feel strongly that the most reasonable option is to build a new K-12 school at East Eden Road. I recognize this may not be very popular, and in fact, when I look at these options, option B2, to have a renovated K-12 with an addition at East Eden Road, is the least expensive. It still involves a rebate from the state of over eleven million dollars. That would bring the total cost down to thirty-two million. I think there's wisdom there, although with renovation, I'm concerned about unforeseen things that do come up. I think over time, having one location for our schools, a single campus to maintain, a single set, a single roof, et cetera, will save us money in the long term as we pay for this over generations. And what I have read is that there are many academic, social, and emotional benefits in having a single K-12 campus, especially for a small community of our size. I would also consider some merit in the option C3 that does include some state funding, if that might include housing our district offices. I am concerned about the high rent on the district offices. I appreciate all of you and the hard work. This is a tough decision. It is a once-in-a-lifetime decision that we will make that will affect many future generations. Thank you.
Vicki Church? Diane Tister?
Hi, thank you. I was at both of the listening sessions, and what I came away with, especially from the last one, was how much people in the community want to meet the needs of the school facilities and how much they want a levy that will pass. They want the school board to come up with that. One of the participants at the table at the last session I was in, Rebecca Potter, who's here, hope I'm not stealing her line, but she made a statement that everyone else at our table agreed with. She said, "The challenge for the school board is to find a plan that gives voters the fewest reasons to vote no." And we all agreed with that, even though we didn't agree about everything else. I think the plan that's up here that meets that criteria is the foundational plan, A1. Also during the listening session, we were looking at, we were asked to address the main, the four main values that village voters are, that are at play in the levy vote. It was a valuable exercise, and those values are, of course, educating our children. Second of all, affordability. Third, sustainability. And fourth, green space. And I, I think Plan A1 meets the needs or meets the criteria of Rebecca's statement because it does address all of those values. It is clearly the most affordable, the one that most people in the community could afford. It's the most sustainable, it doesn't knock down any buildings, it keeps green space. And my understanding is that, is that that does address the facility needs that have been clarified, identified by teachers. It addresses those needs of schools. Another thing that we all agreed at, agreed on at my table was that we didn't think there was a need for a new facility. We valued education for our kids, but we also thought the facility was not critical. One of our table participants came from Europe and talked about how everyone's school is old, you know, a hundred years old in Europe. People don't even think in those terms. So, you know, the, the new building didn't impress any of us there at the table. But I want to just repeat to the board, please keep in mind, thank you, to try to find a plan that gives people, gives voters the fewest reasons to say no. Thank you.
Kathy Adams?
Thank you. Thank you for giving us time. I feel like there were so many questions about all of these, even now that it's down to six, that we're not, that we as a community have not been given ample time to absorb all of this information. In this one setting is the first time we've really seen all of this, and we don't know the tax implications for ourselves and our neighbors. So I feel like this process has not been giving us the facts that we really need as far as cost to make a decision. But I can tell you this, they're all very high, and I am in support of A1 as well. And I feel like that is a lot of money for our community for the same demographic reasons that was mentioned earlier. And I feel, as Diane said, that this would satisfy more people of different, it'll satisfy the green space people because I don't think anything is going to pass that would alter Mills Lawn significantly. That's something that everyone seems to really value, and I would hate to see that gone because it's totally different than any other elementary schools or any. I mean, they built one across from our daughter's home in Fairborn, and the whole thing is pretty much asphalt and concrete. And there's a very small playground surrounded by asphalt parking up on a curb for their three to fifth grade children on Maple Street, South Maple Street there. So what we have is very precious. It would help the green space people. I would like it to be lower. It keeps getting higher, and I don't like that, but I really, really, really want to see something passed. And I think that renovations is something that a lot of people can support and get behind. So I hope that you will decide on that. And I hope that you would give us another listening session to make comments, because when we hear all the tax implications, there is one coming up.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, that's all I have to say.
Michael Sler.
I quickly, most of you know, I'm a member of the facilities committee, and I've enjoyed that process. It's been tough, very tough, I'll say. But I kind of wish we were able to finish some of our final tasks, which we were not able to, in terms of looking at the pipes, looking at the electrical, looking at the roofs, and fine tuning some of those numbers, and maybe adding some cost savings there to do other things. I think we owe that to the community. So I wish we could have done that. I know those are inflated numbers. That's where we are right now. In terms of the last community meeting, I personally would have loved to see costs, which are up there now, and I guess on the next meeting on the thirteenth, we're going to show what it's going to cost the taxpayers. I think that news could be shown in the community as soon as possible. What are each one of those plans going to cost a taxpayer with an average home price of whatever? And I guess my last thing is, I'd like to know, and you may not have the answer, what are the criteria that the school board, what are you going to use to pick a plan? I'd like to know what those criteria are. I'd like to know how you weight each one of those line items to make a choice. And maybe that's something that can be brought out of the, the next meeting. Thank you.
Richard Thaw?
I have.
Laura Scher?
I guess I put myself in the camp, Laura Curl, as village president, I put myself in the camp of Dawn and Diane and Kathy. I think just the political reality of where people were in the last couple of levies, I think that the cost is, unfortunately, is a political reality. And so even though I personally might like a different choice, I think probably A1 is the choice that you need to make. The other thing I'd like to say, I'm really, first of all, thank you to everyone's work on this. I understand how hard this was. I would have gone about it in the reverse way. I would have sat down with the Green County Auditor and figured out kind of what, what kind of revenue you're going to generate for different kinds of millages, right? And, and kind of gone at it that way, because I think, I think it is going to be a little shocking when you put millages and income tax percentages on this. So I, I appreciate all the work you do. I don't know how I go make a decision, but I, I think I'd go with the lowest-cost one, because I think they're all responsible. because I think they're all responsible just choices because of all the good work people put into it. Thank you very much.
Jared Capadia?
I'm also on the Facilities Committee because I understand that there are going to be tax implications prepared until the next week or so. And I urge the board to get that information out to the public. And I think it's imperative that there be another listening session following availability of that information so the board can get a feeling of community and everybody has an ample opportunity to weigh in. Another thing I think that would be helpful for the community is if there was some guarantee that the reimbursement from the state would be used to pay down the debt. I don't know if, if that's legislated or not, but I think that would be something that the public would be very interested in. The other thing is I think the public needs to know the source of maintenance funds going forward. Obviously, the buildings are in disrepair because the proper resources haven't been dedicated to the task. So whatever plan we take up, there has to be ample maintenance funds available to, to keep the facilities in good repair. And lastly, identifying the sustainability issue. It should be noted that all of these plans will reduce the energy footprint of facilities by at least 20% with new HVAC and, and other systems. Additionally, as far as the demolition goes, there is embedded energy in the creation and the installation of the materials that are currently in the buildings. So if those buildings are demolished, you're throwing away all that embedded energy. As far as recycling goes, the items primarily that would be recycled would be the metals and the concrete. Everything else will go to landfill. Concrete will be crushed and used, subgraded to roads. And it's highly likely that everything else will go to landfill.
Julia Bergmanley?
Julia Bergmanley? Hi, thank you for having me here. You know, I will just echo, you know, given the political reality that I think it would be unwise to put anything up on the ballot that wasn't the least costly. I'll admit, when I first considered the A1 option, I was staunchly against it. It did not feel like a long-term investment in the future education of our children. I will not vote for that, I told myself. And then I sat with the options and I rolled things around. And then I had an aha moment. What if this is what compromise looks like for me? We talk a lot about compromise. It's one thing to say it, it's something else in practice. You know what? It hurts. Compromise can hurt. You are giving something up that you really want for the greater good. The greater good being to keep Yellow Springs schools open, to preserve offering the type of education we cherish for years to come. To be clear, A1 is significant. Quite nearly a new building. Nearly, but not quite. We don't get the layout flex options that we would like. We don't get the nutrition services we want. Our children have to be displaced for years and these are just kind of the broad stroke items I know that we will not get with, with A1. But am I willing to give that up for keeping Yaya schools? The answer is absolutely yes. Anyhow, that's my compromise. And I just ask, what's yours?
Jelena Lozard?
Hi, thank you. My name is Jelena Lozard and I'm a parent of two children in the Yellow Springs School System. I just want to say thank you to the board and the school staff for your tireless, exhaustive, and open-hearted process. I would ask everyone, but especially the board, to consider that America is among the worst country among, in the developed world, to live as a child. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death among children and rates of teen and child anxiety, suicide, and depression are the highest they've ever been. Educational investment in this country is substandard. We live in a state with an unconstitutional process for funding education, but this is what we're stuck with. In light of this disheartening situation of childhood in America, I would submit that rather than nickel and diming our children, we should be investing in them. We should be showing them that we believe in a brighter and sunnier future, which hopefully includes lots of glass and modern spaces and also secure spaces. I understand the community concern about affordability, but given that all of these plans are as expensive or more than the last levy, I hope that we will remember who the schools are for. They are for the children. I would also add that I feel the village is making impressive strides in addressing affordability, such as the Pilot Universal Income Project, which is expanding, and proposals for affordable housing. I hope that the board remembers that fiscal conservatism is a value that has long been used in this country to justify not investing in social welfare and education. I like to believe that this village supports the values of social welfare and education. Finally, I think we should consider that new builds will allow for efficiency in energy, which I believe is a value this village holds. I'd implore the board to consider that children have no voice, but they deserve one. Let's not cheap out of them. I'd also remind people that these buildings, unfortunately, are not very beautiful, unlike some of the old and beautiful buildings we see in Europe. In fact, they're rather like the era in which they were built. They evoke nostalgia for an era that was good for some, but not for most. I can believe, I believe that we can build something better and that our kids deserve it. I would endorse any plan that includes some new building. Thank you.
Kate Lepstumthing? Can I say that right again?
Good evening, board. Thank you for having this listening session and for the hard work that you do. I wanted to come tonight and talk about a couple of things, environmental sustainability. So I have come across a Facility Communities Report that talked about environmental sustainability and the plans that we are considering. And it had a few quotes that I wanted to put into the public record for you and for my friends. You probably have already read this. Environmentalists recognize that retrofit, renovation, and upgrades are much more environmentally sustainable than building a new lead building. And we need to be aware of that analysis. The construction sector causes a quarter of greenhouse gases. I'm going to say that again. The construction sector causes a quarter of greenhouse gases. So I am a staunch environmentalist. Our family invested in geothermal, which will not pay off for us in our lifetime, but it's a great investment for the planet. I do want to support our schools. Before the last two levies, no one in my family had ever voted against a levy, but we did not think these plans were right, regretfully. So Carl Elefante, former president of the American Institute of Architecture, is famous for coining the saying, "The greenest building is one that is already built." Retrofitting existing buildings to meet high-performance standards is the most effective strategy for reducing near and midterm carbon emissions. The most important step in limiting climate disruption. We certainly know that we are seeing climate disruption. We did not have a winter this winter. So I am very concerned about this. And in terms of environmental practice, the United States is by far the worst offender. So where we can retrofit instead of build new, I think it could just to, um, consider that. Thirty seconds? Okay. I fear for the state's commitment to refund money. They took money suddenly from the counties when the pandemic hit. Currently, I pay the schools $3,600 a year and we have not put this levy on yet. So you, you're stressing your community to think that we would add another large amount. Thank you.
Shonda Sneed?
Hello, everybody. Again, my name is Shonda Sneed. I've supported the school system. I went to this school and I'll, I'll go through it. I've watched some of the programs and was highly disappointed in some of the comments from the retreat. Just because we don't support, didn't support the last two, that doesn't mean that we do not support the children. It's not a building that educates the children. It's the teachers in the program that teaches and educate and makes our young people strong. I'm sorry, I'm just really frustrated. This program, I see, will run a lot of people out of town. It will. And it is the school board's responsibility to make and compromise. I have no problem with compromises and I have no problem with change, but I do have a problem with losing hope in people in this community. Building new does not make it better. And I can't say that. There have been bad decisions that past school board people have made, which has brought us to this situation. I thank the group that has stood up, Mike, Jared, Judah. I thank you guys all, Amy. I thank you guys all for listening to us. We've been yelling and screaming. We want the best for our students, but we also want the best for our community. And I, and I truly don't feel some of the school boards are listening to our screaming and yelling. We cannot afford it, just like you guys have to be fiscal. We in our community, in our household, have to be fiscal. And it's not happening. It's just not happening. You guys are labeling us as, "We don't care." We care. Prior to this, I had never, ever voted against the school board. I have gave my time, my money, and everything and that was the average Yellow Springs person. All I have to say is, please, 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 listen to us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
David Roach?
Good evening, David Roach. I was on the Building Committee and Facilities Committee, been on it for the last year and we've been whittling away over numbers. But we wouldn't actually have to whittle away over those numbers if one thing had been done by the previous school boards and had also been done and continued by this, which is figuring out how much money we have for maintenance. There's no point in building a building without knowing how much you can afford to maintain it. Looking at these figures is very much so like going to a car showroom and the guy's showing you the nicest car there and he says, "You can afford it." You can't afford it. You have no idea how much money you've got in your pocket. Equally, if, if these figures, we have worked on them and it seems like, no matter how low we tried to get that, 36 million, and we have whittled it down, it seems to get pushed back up again. It looks like another million just suddenly clicked onto us from nowhere. And it's unfortunate because by bringing up those lower figures, you're making the top, the cost of the new rebuild or the cost of a new build look better. If you were a business, you would never do it like this. Like Laura said, you would have gone and figured out how much you have for maintenance. Then you would have figured out how much you can actually get from the community. And then you would design a building to meet that or you would say, "We can't afford a building. We're going to remodel to match that." That's really all I have to say, but it all still comes back to a maintenance issue. If you don't have maintenance, even a new build is going to crumble to the ground, fall down, look miserable, have overflowing toilets. Maintenance. It all comes down to maintenance. And no one is prepared to put a figure on the table. Even as a committee, we asked numerous times, you know, "When are we going to get a maintenance figure?" And no one has come up with a maintenance figure. Maintenance could nearly be the same amount of money as it's going to cost to build, you know, the, the annual repayment. It could nearly be the same amount of money every year. So whatever we vote for this, we could nearly have to vote the same sort of money for maintenance. So it's just a point. Before we get carried away with ourselves here, we really need a maintenance figure. The village needs to know what it is. Voters need to know. And you're not the only levy that's going to come up. There's going to be infrastructure levies for the village and some other levies. So that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Rebecca Potter?
Thank you. I showed up late. I'm glad I could get on the list. I have to first thank Mike Richley for your tremendous effort and work and patience with this community. And I really came up here to thank people, also the facilities experts, your time and effort, also your patience and diligence. I really want to thank you all. And our public servants, I want to thank you as well. I am for the A option, but I understand that this decision is your decision and I was very impressed with the listening session in the sense that we're waiting for you to make that decision as a community and waiting for direction and how to get behind it. I would ask Terry Holden to go to the teachers, particularly with the option that may seem like a compromise to them, an unwelcome one, that's the A1, and have them really drill down and figure out, well, does this meet their needs? What might need to be shifted from one column to another? We have a great, dedicated teaching staff. And they have had to go through a lot with the two failed levies and the prolonged conversation on this one. So as soon as we can rally behind that decision, I hope it's the A1 decision. It's the one we know the most about. It's the one we can work with the best and it's the one teachers can work with. I, I have confidence, maybe hope, an optimist, that that can work for the teachers as well, but it will require their participation and require that we listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Kirk. You know, it's, it's been a long journey, I think, to get here for, for everybody. And I know nobody's excited about looking at the options that we have in front of us. But the reality is, you know, we have to come to terms with what our responsibilities as a community, as a board are. And I just heard someone recently mention that, you know, if we were a business, we wouldn't be able to do that. The difference is we're not a business. We are a public entity that has a specific charge that is defined in the state, like constitution, to provide an educational service to our product, to our community. And I would hope, based on the values stated in the community, that we would want to do that to an exceptional level. And a building is only part of that. And, you know, we have managed to push our conversation now where we went from being like the greatest economic moment possible to do this project to probably one of the more challenging ones. to probably one of the more challenging ones. And that's the reality. You know, we can talk about whether it's affordability or this, everything has a trade-off, right? You'll have some people say they want the most affordable thing, but then they'll say, "Well, I don't want one campus." Well, two campuses is less affordable, you know? And so immediately, we have these values conflicting with each other, which is actually kind of a, it's a real-life experiment to see like what are your real values? Because that's, life is about trade-offs, right? And that's what we're doing here, is figuring out what are the right trade-offs for our community. And, you know, it has been challenging, because I think the concerns that some people have, particularly ones related to budget, are very real in this environment. And while we have to give credence to that, that doesn't mean that it changes what our role and responsibility is as a community. You know, because we're playing the forever game here. We're talking about a project that extends, you know, beyond the useful life for any of our children, the useful life for, you know, many people there, you know? It's just, this is a long-term project. Thirty years, probably out there, we're trying to get out of usage, and what we're talking about paying for. And so it's really important to make a decision that's going to last that long. And that could be one of these options here. But it could also be that the community is at an influx point, where we say, "You know what? While we value education, we no longer think we have the financial capacity to maintain our own school district." And that's something that I think, you know, if you look at these options here, you know, we're going to go with one of these. If it was my choice, I'd try to pick the K4 at Mills Lawn, the 512, brand-new at the middle school, high school, because that's the least disruptive to the students, gets the greatest state match, and deals with our political issue of the fact that people don't want to get rid of Mills Lawn. And that's something we know. So, I don't know. I have a million more things I could say, but I respect the time limit. Thank you.
So that was all the names I had on the list. Is anyone else who's sat here and would like to speak? I'd ask you to come on up and state your name.
Hello, I'm Jonas Brebek. I'm the father of a graduate, class of 2020, a student who's in Mills Lawn and two children that will, I'm excited to go to Mills Lawn at some point in the future. I think all of these options represent an answer to the needs of our students. I don't think any of these are superior, inferior to the other. I think there's different ways to meet the needs of our students, and I think the time put into them, I just want to thank everybody for the time they've put into it. I think that's a lot of work. I mean, as I said, I'm the father of four. I'm currently the only one working in the household. My wife is on maternity leave, and I cannot make ends meet as it stands. So I'm one of those people that I love children, and I'm a teacher, I've been there for 20 years. But if we go with something that's going to stress me, there might be three fewer students in the school district, because that's the reality. Like, I might have to go. And speaking of money, like, I know it's not all about money, but when you look at this, money is a huge thing. I don't want my students, my children, to think that they're so important that other people have to be pushed out of town so that they can have whatever the option may be. I think that's a terrible lesson to teach them, that they are way more important than our elders, way more important than people who are less well-off than they may be. I think we really need to think about the holistic version of like what this means for our village. Also, my, you know, my two-month-old at home is going to be dealing with a world much different than I came in. And I think the most environmentally responsible decision, if we want to teach them what it means to adjust to climate change, is to fix what's broken and how to be the least disruptive, and that seems to be A1. Even if A1 is put on the ballot, and this, you know, like, there's a lot to do with it in terms of what we're going to see on the ballot, what numbers are going to be there, it's still going to be an extremely difficult decision for me. Because I'm, like, as I said, financially, I'm stressed as it is. The village is looking at taxing people who are working outside of town. You know, who knows what else is going to come up to burden us further? A lot of my neighbors are on fixed income. I mean, so it's very hard for me to think about doing something that's going to put people out or put myself out. So I just want you to think about that, like, you know, all these options represent we love our kids. There's not one of them that says, "I love my kids more than the other." So please just consider the environmental aspect, and please consider the financial impact. Thank you.
Just continuing for us.
Thank you, George. Thank you for having the meeting and for inviting us to come speak. I'm just thinking of the most important factor of any school is always the teachers. They also happen to be the most expensive when you're not building new schools, that is. So I'm worried that, I worked in a school district once that had to lay off teachers because they weren't able to meet their budget. They weren't able to pay for their bills. Once we choose a plan, we'll have to pay for those buildings or the renovations. If we have to make cuts, my fear is that the cuts will be staff. And that will diminish the quality of education far greater than the quality of the buildings. I haven't heard that mentioned. I doubt that there's any guarantees that could be made or any plans. But what do we do if we can't pay for what we set out to do? If we build the buildings, we're obligated to pay. So then, do we lay off teachers? So the buildings, the plan that has the least cost would make that the least likely to happen. That is just one of my concerns, and one of my reasons that I think we should go with the A1. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Deja Freeman. I am a mother of a Mills Lawn student. I own a home here in Yellow Springs. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I think it's really important that I say what I need to say. To echo some of the sentiments of my neighbors tonight, income taxes are already increasing, utilities in Yellow Springs have increased, mortgages are prohibitively expensive already, and the Yellow Springs population as a whole is aging. I wonder why it is we need to expand the schools by quite so many square feet when the population of families like mine with school-age students are dwindling here in town? Who do we think we're building these massive buildings for? What do we need two band rooms for? As an example, I don't have a problem with band. I'm a theater kid and an artist. You get what I'm saying. I don't think the most expensive fancy schmancy school equals the highest quality education. We know this. We are already a national school of excellence. Can we focus, can we focus more on the education point instead of the building itself? I'm sure that there are ways we can improve it, but I just don't feel that this is responsible, and it is a huge burden to families like mine. I agree. I, like I said, I own my home. I will very likely not be able to pay my mortgage if the property taxes go up anymore. And that's terrifying. Being a part of this community was a purposeful choice, and it is hugely important for the way that we want to raise our family. And as we keep coming up with more and more expensive things like this that just burden real people, real families, real pieces of this community, I think it's important that we consider who these projects affect. Thank you.
Good evening, David Miller. I have three children in schools currently. And I want to stress something that, in this process, and now for me, it's been, it seems like it's been longer, but it's eight years. Doing nothing isn't an option. So if we're talking about the numbers here and seeing how exorbitant they are, and they're shocking to me, but that's the reality of it. And so if we're going to look at those numbers and be shocked by them, they're numbers that we do have to accept. We have to understand that those numbers are not, like, these buildings that we've, the facilities committee has been fantastic about looking at all the different options. They're not Cadillac options. These are not fancy, spancy schools to, they're nice. They're great. They meet the needs of our students, and that's why those options are available with the facilities committees and, you know, the architects, everybody that's been involved and have been to several of the meetings are really cutting these options down to the bare minimum. And so when you look at each one of those options, those are really bare minimum options for each one of them. So those aren't available to change, that these things have to happen. And one of my biggest concerns is that we do lose the local school district, and that would be a travesty in Yellow Springs. We would not be Yellow Springs anymore if we didn't have these schools. These local schools are so important. And, you know, I go to Cedarville, and I see their new building, and it's not fancy, spancy either, but it's nice, it's newer, it looks great. And I see their athletic facilities, and I watch my boys play baseball in the athletic facilities, when we really don't have a baseball diamond here for the baseball team. And that's fine. Other schools have way more than we have. And even with what we're going to get here, it's really addressing just the basic needs. I just want everybody to understand that. And the option of doing nothing is having Cedar Cliff Schools take over and maybe sending our schools out to Cedarville and cheering for the Indians, which is not a Yellow Springs thing to do with Bulldogs. And we need to stay the Bulldogs. I have been in three districts, I'm a teacher, and I've been in three districts that have done new builds, renovations. Renovations have been great, but they do need to be kind of in a way Cadillac renovations. It needs to be completely done in a way so that it's a new facility, almost a new facility, with the walls being and some of the other pieces and parts being refurbished. I've been in those districts, and I tell you that the opportunity for public comments and the information that public has been given is one-tenth of what we can get here. So we've gotten plenty of opportunities to be involved in these meetings, to go and attend these meetings and get all this information. And if we didn't attend those meetings until now, that was our shortcoming. So thank you so much for all the time that you guys have put into this, because it's amazing. But we can't do nothing. We have to do something, and it has to happen. And it's really unfortunate, because I love this community and I hate to see people hurting. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Cecil Slaughter. I might be related to Michael Slaughter. Anyway, from a sustainability standpoint, for me, the A1 plan makes the most sense. I think it makes the most sense for our community. I think that we have to be respectful of what our population is. We do have an older population. We have a single-parent population that are here trying to raise their children in the best zip code possible. Your zip code does make or break the success of your children. That is documented. You can see those who go to a zip code that they probably don't want to be in. And you can see the hardships regularly about the struggles and the things that they suffer. Now, new school is great, but is it necessary? And mind you know, what we have to work with with the A1, it might not be 100%. But can we be happy with a good 75, a good 80%? I think that we can. I think we're smart people. I think we're confident people. And to boo-hoo because we don't get new doesn't mean that it's the end of the world. We still have the rest of the community, and you have to talk to your children about what success looks like. You work with what you have. It may not be the best, but if it's pretty good, you work with it, and you decide through your lifetime, you're going to try to make something better for yourself. That's called striving, that's called thriving and surviving. I agree with Miss Sneed that what makes your children successful are the teachers. You don't have to have a sparkly shiny new building. You don't want leaks like the one I saw back there. I agree. But I don't think a new build is the answer to our issue. Thank you.
But anyway. My name is Jackie Clark, and I'm a mom and also a teacher for 25 years in Fairborn. I have my Fairborn shirt on. I love our new building, but I miss my six windows. I've got the state-issue one window, and that's it. And we have the state-issue ugly floor that's already falling hot after three years. So I'm going to say that maintenance is very, 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 very important. So I'm reiterating what everybody else has already said. I was in the old building for years, I had headaches, I didn't like the things we were worried about with the old building, so I get that. But I don't love the new building either. I mean, we can't ever open our one window, and that's because of safety issues. And we can't ever open our doors for fresh air because of safety issues. But I really feel like, because you're not allowed to have the doors open because somebody could come in. So I really, really, really think we need a new high school here in town. So I'm constantly, I don't know what the answer is. But I don't agree that a new build is the be-all, wonderful thing either, because I'm in a new building, and there's lots of things we don't love. They haven't turned the air on yet, so we're all dying this week. They're going to turn the air on next week. And I'm like, well, this is just like the old building, we're all hot. So anyway, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I just know that I'm already seeing the floor, and it's gross, and it's a brand-new building. And I'm just fairly surprised, because we have a maintenance plan, but I don't feel like they put enough money into that either. So that's a huge problem for even a new building. And just in case everybody didn't know, we did have to throw everything away. No new furniture can go into the new building, I mean, only new furniture can go into a new building. Whatever the state says you have to do, you have to do. And that was really surprising, because I loved my old chair, I loved some other things, and I couldn't bring it with me. We also had to get rid of a library, because I know you guys have talked about that before, the pros and cons of, you know, if you want this auditorium, you can't have a library. If you want two cafeterias, you can't have this. And again, those are things you have to work out. But we chose not to have a library, so we have books all over the place that nobody takes care of. But the other building, FIS, the 345, they chose a library and a computer lab. So it was nice they let the teachers input to an extent, but now I'm in the building without the library, and I'm a little surprised we don't have a library. So those are just future things to think about if you get a new building. And you guys have said that before, there's some things you can have and some things you can't. So anyway, I don't have the answer, but I know the high school, we need a new high school. Because my husband went there, and it's old. But anyway, so, thank you.
Hi. I didn't want to talk, but I think it's important for parents to speak up. I'm Naomi Bandorno, I have three kids, and I graduated 1995. I don't have an answer either, honestly. I was on the last levy committee and was excited about a K-12. I still would be excited about a K-12. I really like the B2 option. I like the option to have a K-12 but save some stuff. I think that's good out-of-the-box thinking. Right now, the message I'm hearing, and I don't know if it's the loudest voices in the room or the people who happen to come to meetings, or if it's actually the truth, right now what I'm hearing is that the community and what, I'm afraid that Yellow Springs has fallen into a trap of binary thinking here, very much, and that it is renovations or new build, and people are stuck in their thinking. And it's making planning creatively and being open to new ideas really difficult from both sides. So I'm trying to break down all of my pre-existing, you know, ideas and things that I've wanted and think about what would work. I think A1 is not enough, I will say that. I'm, my biggest, I'm obviously concerned for my kids. My two oldest will probably be graduated by the time any of this comes through, so they will have to deal with the hardship and get none of the benefit. My youngest will get to benefit from it, so that's great. I'm not doing this for my kids, I'm doing this for my community and for future children. My biggest concern really is the teachers, because we are in the midst of a teacher shortage. It's a real crisis, and it's not just Yellow Springs, it's all over. And so to get, to attract and retain the best teachers to our schools, we're competing with all of our neighboring districts, and that's just a fact. Like, Yellow Springs is special, but we are not so special that we can compete with a new school or a school that has really comfortable, high-tech facilities. It's just... It's just a reality. Our teachers are amazing, and we have asked them to sacrifice a lot. And so I guess my biggest, I think A1 would, there's no question it would be an improvement. And something that will pass is really important, obviously. So I'm, I'm certainly, those, those things weigh heavily for me. I don't know whether it's enough to attract and retain the high-caliber teachers that I think our community deserves and expects. I don't know. I don't know that. So I guess one thing that I would really love for you to think about with A1 is planning it, and maybe this is you, Mike, but planning it in a way that would allow for future additions and improvements that if, whenever Yellow Springs can afford a little bit more, just make sure we're not cutting off any options for the future, if that's what we go with. So, good luck. I really don't know how you're gonna do this.
Anybody else?
I'm just gonna ask anybody that spoke that didn't write their name down to speak, if you would, please come and write it down as legibly as possible for me, for record-keeping purposes. I greatly appreciate that.
Leslie's taking care.
Okay, yeah. I've been taking notes and listing their names, but last names are very hard to spell.
So our next meeting will be next Thursday, April thirteenth, certain extra, the fourth meeting will be over at the high school, there will be a facility. Do I have a motion for you, or?
Um, well, I would, it might be worth considering. There might be. I wonder if it would be helpful to have our next meeting in a bigger venue, because I think it'll be, I think the, I think Jay's topic, the treasurer's topic, will be one that people want.
We can't. Here's the dilemma. If we have it here, we have two options, we have the high school and we have here. We have it here, we can't livestream it because of, are we livestreaming this?
No, we're just recording.
No, we're recording. It's just the difference in the end mark. So there's gonna be information to see, so, I mean, we can make it work either way, just, I just want you to be aware.
The livestream is probably the most important, so.
Fair enough. We just need to know soon so we can get the appropriate notice in.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for hearing that talk. If anybody wants, if nobody else will, wants to chime in, I'm willing to make a motion to adjourn.
I have seconds.
Vera Bios?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hembling?
Yes.
Magnet?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
You are adjourned at seven thirty.